Approval of the school committee minutes from our workshop meeting held on July 11th, 2016. We have next, out of state and overnight field trip requests, the first being the NJROTC trip to Norwich University in Northfield, Vermont, December 1st through the 4th. And then there's some possible alternate dates being January 26th, that can't be right. It says 26th through the 19th. Let me get the actual item.
Oh, the 29th.
You know what, let's just take the item with the date of, with the planned date of December 1st through the 4th with possible alternate dates in January, February, March or April.
It's supposed to be the 29th, 26th to the 29th?
The 26th to the 29th.
That's what it says on the field trip request.
Thank you. Would anybody like to hold that item? We also have approval of the 2016-2017 school year committee meeting calendar. That's included in our packets, most of the dates being on the second or in fourth Monday of the month with the exception of months in which there's a holiday.
I'll just hold that.
You want to hold it? Next, we have the French River Education Collaborative bids for the athletic supplies. We have a request to surplus four copy machines at Oxford Middle School. Surplus of vehicle for trade-in for our bus fleet in the amount of $3,000. We have a request to void the previously approved warrant dated July 5th, 2016 in the amount of $37,190.77. And we have approval of several warrants. July 12th, 2016, $36,990.06. That's an accounts payable warrant. July 19th, 2016, an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $19,455.74. An accounts payable warrant dated July 26th, 2016 in the amount of $60,427.02. We have a payroll warrant dated July 26th, 2016 in the amount of $147,567.81. Payroll warrant dated July 27th, 2016 in the amount of $1,845.58. An accounts payable warrant dated August 2nd, 2016, the amount of $27,816.35. Payroll warrant dated August 9th, 2016 in the amount of $143,057.31. An accounts payable warrant dated August 16th, 2016 in the amount of $14,782.23. Accounts payables warrant dated August 23rd, 2016 in the amount of $40,845. And lastly, an accounts payable warrant dated August 30th, 2016 in the amount of Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all of the items on the consent agenda with the exception of the school committee meeting calendar.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman.
Roll call vote, Mrs. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mr. Coonan?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, the record show that the motion carries with four in the affirmative and one absent. For the matter of the school committee calendar, I'd like to open it up for discussion, Mrs. Day.
Okay, my question was that the workshop, sorry, it's really loud. The workshop's not listed on here?
Yes, we haven't listed the workshops. These are our regular meetings that we have. We do have a workshop tentatively scheduled for September 19th.
Right, and then also for the months where there's a holiday on the Monday, I was thinking, you know, with approving the AP warrants and stuff, maybe it would be beneficial to reschedule those, so we are meeting twice a month?
We, I'll open it up for discussion with the rest of the committee. I think that the process that we had in place over the summer months seemed to work well though, going back to going down to central office and approving them and, you know, then catching up like we did this evening. That's not to say that we won't necessarily schedule a meeting if need be. If the committee would like to look at scheduling, putting something on the calendars now, we could certainly do that, but we can also call a meeting at any time when it's properly posted.
Okay.
Do, does, yes, Mr. Spitz?
I think this really does work, and I think it works very, very well. Normally in December with the holidays, it's tough to get that second meeting in, and I think that's why we've pretty much done a one meeting in December. To Mr. Pata's point, if we just stay up with the warrants, we're down there, we review them and sign them.
Right, that is working, it worked well over the summer.
It worked well over the summer as well, so, I mean, I think the system we have in place is kind of doing it for us, so I'd like to just keep it the way it is.
And I mean, we likely will, because we're doing that five-month or five-session governance workshop with MASC, so we'll likely have some workshops in between.
Right, and I just didn't know if those should be reflected on here.
Well, we only have the one scheduled so far. We'll also have some additional items to add in here when we get into budget workshops, which last year, I think, took place in November and December, so we'll, we'll...
We'll meet enough.
We'll be meeting a lot. Are you, are you okay with that?
I am, thank you.
Okay. Here, then I would like to entertain a motion to approve the school committee meeting calendar as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman.
Take the vote, Mrs. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mr. Coonan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, the record show, passes four in the affirmative, one absent. Okay, next item on our agenda is public comment. If there's anybody in the audience who wishes to address the committee regarding anything listed on our agenda this evening, you're welcome to do so at this point. I will open the floor if anybody would like to, they can step up to the table. Nobody's coming up, so I will close the floor for public comment. If it pleases the committee, I think we have some folks here from Operation Graduation. Do we have anybody here that's speaking to us?
I don't know.
You want to come on up, and we'll let you do that, so you can come up now. Come up, have a seat, welcome. Thank you for coming down this evening.
So, our chairperson is not here as of yet, she's on her way.
Do you want me to do it after?
No, because we don't, we're trying to text her when she is.
Okay.
So Donna and I are part of the group trying to raise money for Operation Graduation, and we just wanted to let you know that we are beginning to meet, and we, neither of us really know what the procedure is as far as who we have to go through for what Donna has gone down to central office to, you know, talk about finance and stuff like that, and we understand all of that, so is there anything else that we have to do?
I will see if Dr. Garso has any comments to make, but I'm not aware of the committee being involved in Operation Graduation at all.
And in all honesty, the administration is not very involved in Operation Graduation either, except to the extent that we were happy to support with the distribution of flyers and those kinds of things. So generally, over the last couple of years, flyers that were proposed to be sent out for fundraising activities or other events are forwarded to the executive assistant, Ms. Cortez, and they get reviewed by my office and approved, and we go from there. But we certainly recognize and welcome the support of your organization. It's been some great nights after graduation, and we look forward to that again.
Okay.
All right.
Somebody at the office had recommended that we get on the agenda in order to, you know, basically present what we're doing, but it sounds like that's really not necessary.
I don't, Mr. Coonan?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for coming in, because this is a great way to put it in the record, put it in the minutes, put it on our website, that Operation Graduation is still ongoing. It's really been a historical tradition. Through Oxford, I thank you for picking that piece up again. So the words out there in the committee was, they're doing it, yes, they are doing that, so the committee knows the names, faces and contacts, so we can see in the right direction. You may also want to check with the town clerk, because I'm sure he'll be raising money, so there may be some reporting requirements as well with that. And so that may be a little better an avenue to make sure that everything is transferred over from the previous administration, if they were filed with the town clerk, which they should have, if they're raising money with the community.
Yep.
Anything with donations.
We've already seen more.
We've already seen more, so that's good. That's a legal aspect. From here, it's more like, as the chair said, and superintendent, just recognizing and thanking you, where the committee is not actively involved, we can't go out and actively raise money, but, you know, we have our support in doing so.
Wonderful, perfect. All right, thank you.
Did you, Mr. Spitz?
You're all set.
You're all set? Well, thank you very much, we know it's a lot of hard work.
Yes, thank you.
Coworker of mine was treasurer last year, so...
Yeah, well, she want to do it again on that.
I don't... I think she's got a gap year, because I think she's got a child who'll be a senior next year, so. But thank you for coming down and for all that you do for those seniors, that's a great night. Moving on to unfinished business, we have handbook changes for Oxford High School. I'd like to invite Mr. Tebow, are you coming up too, Mr. Connery, assistant principal?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present our handbook changes this evening. We forwarded six changes to the 2016-2017 student handbook. I don't believe there are any major changes, but we did put the six that we thought were, we put the six that were significant. The first one, on page seven, we added a senior privilege. That was at the request of the elected senior class officers. They met with Mr. Connery and I before the end of the school year, and then again over the summer. There were some that they requested that we just, that we could not, you know, support, but this was one that was easy to support, and it's in addition to the senior privileges that we had in last year's handbook. The second change, page nine, summer school courses was changed from two to three, and really that was just to reflect a change in practice that was ongoing. It had been that way for a couple of years, but for whatever reason, it was not listed in the handbook that way. You know, so we wanted to make sure that it was accurate in the handbook, that students may take up to three summer school courses.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question on that.
Sure.
So, a student fails three courses, are they able to go through summer school and make up those three courses?
Up to three, yes.
Up to three?
Yeah.
Which, and then, I think part of the change where, I don't know if it's related or not, there's also an increase of courses as well.
There is, yes.
So how, so, so I think when you said it all kind of fits together where, if a student was taking five courses and you do two, now all of a sudden they're taking more courses, so it just changes, so the percentage is still, is still pretty close?
Yes, that would be accurate, absolutely, yes.
So now they're taking up to eight courses?
Correct, and so, absolutely, what you're saying is 100% accurate. They were, a few years back, they might have been taking five courses, maybe six, and they could take two in summer school if they, you know, if they failed. Now, most students in this building have seven and/or eight courses, and so now it's up to three. Certainly, we prefer that they pass their regular year courses, but it's a safety net for students who struggle. This past school year, we did have 16 students who without summer school would not have graduated, they would have had to come back as fifth-year seniors, and because of summer school and that safety net, they were able to graduate and earn a high school, most of them earned a high school diploma. And I would just also add that over the last several years, we've been supported by the Mass Grad Initiative, which is a state grant, so our summer school has been funded through that grant, you know, and the idea behind the grant is credit recovery and credit acceleration, really, so that goes hand in hand. Thank you for the clarification. Very good. Number three there, page 25, again, it's not really changed to the policy, it was just clear language around the fact that when we host a dance here, anytime there's an outside guest, we really, we want the forms back a week in advance so that we can do our due diligence in checking. Knock on wood, we haven't had any issues with outside guests or anything like that, but we want to make sure that we're in a position where we have time to review those in a timely fashion, to be proactive. Page four, this, I think, is probably the most significant change to the handbook, and it's just adding, I would stress that in the handbook, the issue of tardy to school and tardy to class was in the handbook, but this spells out in a little bit more clearer terms what the progressive action might be, that might be taken for students who are tardy. In particular, we're looking at chronic tardy to school. This is in part response to concerns that were raised by faculty members over the school year, and I want to be clear that we're talking about 24 students on average a day, so I don't want anyone to think that, you know, we have an excessive amount of students who are tardy, that's not the case at all. What we have, though, are some students who are chronically tardy, and that's who we want to, you know, try and change that pattern of behavior so that they're here on time, because we don't have home room, so period one, we start learning as soon as the first bell starts, so we need the students in our, in their seats in order to, for the teachers to teach them and for them to learn. So really, that's just, it's about trying to get after these students who are chronically tardy, hopefully to get them here, you know, on time regularly.
Mr. Pata? Mr. Spitz?
My favorite topic, so I have to say something, that's just how I work on this. So what did we do this past year for tardiness? I mean, you said it was in the handbook. Where does this vary from what we were doing?
So, in the handbook, it referenced a range of consequences from, you know, having conversations with students and parents, which we certainly did, you know, in that range, it referenced office detention as well. What we didn't do, which has been done in years past, is we did not, and we fell strongly about this, we did not assign in-school suspension for students who were tardy, and the reason for that is because the state is very much on top of suspensions, including in-school suspensions, and so, the issue with tardiness is the kids aren't in class, so to pull them on a class and put them in in-school suspension doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. So we had the conversations with kids. This coming year, what we feel is by having specific numbers attached and having it in black and white and spelled out, it strengthens our conversation with the parents to say, look, the expectations are clear, these are the numbers, you know, and trying to work on that.
Just one more question, if I could on that. Now, you mentioned in your presentation that these are circumstances that might be taken. That terminology doesn't mean a lot to me. If it goes in the handbook, and I'm a big one on this, if we put it in print, it needs to be something that we adhere to, and it shouldn't be what we might do to the student. If this goes out and goes, and I approve it with the committee tonight, it really needs to be something that we actually hold ourselves accountable for, that these people are actually held to this, and the students follow this policy, and that's one of my big things. If we're not going to do that, we shouldn't put it in the handbook, that's what I say every year. This, to me, is a big one, because, again, it's time and learning that we're not getting, and we do have some students that do it on a regular basis, and I think those are the people, again, as you said, that we have to address. But I just want to hear that it's going to be done, not, might be done.
So, absolutely, it's going to be done, and I just want to make sure that we're very clear, we're talking about, on average, there's 24 students a day tardy to the building, you know, we have this past year 410 students, so it's a very small percentage, and so I always get nervous that, you know, a few kids who are chronically tardy create a perception that's not really reality, but we absolutely are going to adhere to this, to the policy that's in the handbook, as we do with all of our policies that are in the handbook.
Great, thank you.
You have something, Mrs. Day?
Oh, I do. Yes, I was just looking, and it's like, after the 10th tardy, that's listed twice? Is that, is that right, or?
Yes.
So after the 10th tardy, you're going to have the office detention? It says call to parent, but it also says parental meeting required?
Yes, so you'll notice that there's a parental call after the 5th detention and a call after the 8th detention, a call after the 10th, and then anything beyond that, so the first after the 10th means at the 10th.
At the 10th?
At the 10th, you show up tardy 10 times, your 10th one will instigate a detention and a call home. Any beyond that will have to have progressive disciplinary action, because obviously those attentions hadn't made a change.
So we can change the wording to any additional?
Okay, it was just a little bit confusing, I wasn't sure if all that would happen at once, or...
Yeah, so that, so that last one that currently reads after 10th, if it's all, if it's all right with the committee, I would recommend that we put any additional.
For the last one, you want to say?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
So really, is it the 10th and then beyond the 10th is where the last one's speaking to us?
All right, so you'll just fix the wording on that, so it's not so confusing. Thank you.
Mr. Coonan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there, or let's, I want to be clear too, we're looking at policies, within the classroom management plan of the educators at Oxford High School, is there an academic penalty for students tardy to class? Or is there any type of attendance policy that this is, that this goes with? Because before, I mean, you take your time to answer that, because I do support the original, the thought you had, well, now it's almost a double jeopardy situation, that now you're late to class, now guess what, now you're in school suspension, the key is to get the kid in class, and to change the behavior to get him to class.
Sure, so this policy here, it's not tardy to class, this is, this is for the school day itself. So, so for example, if a student came to, if a student's late for the day, they're also late for their first period class, right, so I think that's what you're asking.
Exactly, yeah. And rotating, so.
Right, so when they come in late for the day, they're going to have a pass from the office, so there would be no penalty from the classroom teacher, because they'd be issued a pass, but when it gets to 5th, 8th, 10th, that's when the office is going to be addressing it. So that's, so the only time a teacher would consequence a student is if they're tardy without authorization from the office, you know. So in this case, they're coming in late to the building, that's why we're issuing them the pass, and we're tracking it there. So it's, that's how it would be handled.
Right, it's still, it's one of the advantages of the rotating schedule, with the first period kids, is it absent all the time?
Right.
But a student is a periodic offender to this, and if the student is walking in at, we start at 7:15, at 7:45, is there an academic penalty in terms of attendance within the class that the student suffers as well?
So I, I don't know that it's an academic penalty, but, you know, obviously you can't recreate what the student has missed for that half hour.
Right.
You know, so is the student allowed to make up the assignment? Absolutely. Are they allowed to get any missed work? Absolutely. So it's not a penalty, but, you know, as a teacher, you know, you can't recreate?
Right.
For the half hour?
No, that's where I can, where I'm sure Mr. Spitz is in the community, is so adamant about this, because we can't do that, you know, you're trying to find ways to change your behavior, and I was just wondering if there's any type of academic penalty that's also a student, a student.
No, so the other thing to keep in mind, though, is, so we're talking right now, this is talking specifically first thing in the morning, let's say it's period four, and a student is late to class without, you know, for no, you know, unauthorized tardy, the teacher, we expect the teacher to hold the students accountable in some way, so some teachers, for example, have a procedure in place where students have to sign in if they don't have a pass, and then after the third tardy to class, they issue a teacher detention, and the teacher holds them for detention. But that's the penalty, it's not, you're given a zero if you've missed, you know, it's not, you can't start your assignment, anything like that, that's...
Thank you.
You good?
I just have one more question. You said that the teacher holds them for detention? Does the office track the teacher's detentions?
No, so teachers, so teachers who issue detentions, they, they track it on their own. The only time the office becomes involved is if, you know, I assign you a detention, you don't show up, now you've cut my detention, then it becomes a referral to the office, and then that student is assigned office detention for cutting a teacher detention. But teachers are, you know, teachers hold students for their own detentions, they're typically much shorter than an office detention. An office detention is...
Office detention is till 3:30?
3:30. From, from 1:45, you know, so it's, it's almost two hours, whereas a teacher detention's usually, well, it depends on the offense, but it's much shorter than usually than two hours.
So it's just at the teacher's discretion?
Correct.
And that works well?
I think you'd have to, you know, some teachers, for some teachers, they have a system that works better than others, I think it varies from, from teacher to teacher and from student to student, quite frankly, you know, but, you know, that, that's, I think if you look at high schools across the state, I think most high schools are set up that way. And, should I keep going?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, no, you're right. So, page 57, just changed the, the language in terms of the, with respect to the advisory, advisory meets every other week, and also at various times as scheduled by administration throughout the school year. And then, page 60...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I just, I just like to keep you busy. We had a presentation from, from the students on RSVP, which was raising student voices in participation. The number one complaint was on advisories, that they are not getting enough advisories, there are times when they only meet once a month, because it is up to the administration, and it does involve time for learning. What's, why couldn't that be planned in each week, in advisor, in, every single week, that these, these groups could meet and really account for the time to make the students happy, being that this was their number one priority that they complained about?
So, so a few things. First, advisory meets every other week, so it's, it's twice a month, it's, it's not once a month, with the exception, maybe, just as, you know, the school committee meetings in December when we have a break, something like that, if there was a vacation, it might be a little bit longer, but every other week is when they're, they're scheduled. The additional ones as scheduled by administration would be, you know, for example, if during course request time, we needed an extended advisory to select courses, we might use advisory to do that. In response to the, to meeting more frequently, before, before I, before we'd be... In response to the, to meeting more frequently, before, before I, before we'd be willing to do that, I think we would really need to improve what goes on in advisory. It would need to be a worthwhile use of, of the time and quite frankly, advisories differ from one to another. With, with some getting very good use of the time and others not so much. So when we have the, the program itself strengthened and then it would be a worthwhile investment in time, as I said to the senior class president when we spoke about it, I'd be more than willing, we'd be more than willing to, to do that, but we have to strengthen the advisory program first.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay. So the, the final two changes, just, we included a link to the wellness program or the wellness plan for Oxford and also we updated the school lunch prices to reflect the increases that are going into effect in September. And I will be happy to answer. Oh, one other change, it, it doesn't show it here, but we reformatted the handbook. I don't know if, if you noticed that, but one of the, one of the concerns that was raised last year was that it didn't really, there wasn't a lot of flow to it. So we tried, we looked at four different communities' handbooks and we, you know, just reformatted. We didn't take anything out, we just kind of changed the order so that it flowed a little bit better. And we updated the table of contents.
Perfect.
For that.
Okay, any other questions for these gentlemen? Comment from Dr. Garcia?
If I could, and I apologize for putting your gentleman on the spot, but if you could just briefly give us an update on the work that's going into the 8th grade being moved into the high school, the work that's been accomplished over the summer and how ready are, are you feeling to go? I have my own thoughts on it, I've been here quite a bit, I see all the work that's taking place, but if you could just update us a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, so we've up, we've, the teachers have all been moved over, their curriculum materials have all been moved over from the, from the middle school. Mr. Dubey, Mr. Heatherman, the custodians did an excellent job in, in moving that stuff over. The building is in very good shape as well, so we appreciate the, the hard work of the custodial crew for that. The 8th grade schedule is pretty much finalized. We plan to issue copies of schedules to our 8th graders and 9th graders tomorrow at the Pirate Voyage, so hopefully we'll have a great turnout. Anyone who can't make the Pirate Voyage, there's no reason to panic. We will mail any schedules that don't get picked up tomorrow evening, we will put them in the mail first thing on Friday. They're also viewable or will be in iPass, you know, so you don't even need the, the hot copy necessarily, students should be able to view that. In terms of, you know, our ongoing one-to-one initiative work, have a meeting with Mr. Phillips to finalize, you know, that work, but as planned and as we stated, you know, we have an early October launch date to get that technology into the students' hands. We've had 8th grade teachers in and out of the building setting up their classrooms. They're very excited, attending PD on the use of the Chromebooks and on Google Classroom and things of that nature. I don't know if you want to add anything?
The, we have one open 8th grade position that has been hired, that position's been filled, and she's already got her classroom set up. So there was a new science teacher and she's ready to go. But I think Mr. Tebow covered it pretty well. All the, all the new, the teachers that have come over as well as the new hire have been in their rooms, they've set up the rooms the way they're looking. Guidance has been in the last few days finalizing the schedule for the students. You know, it's, it's, at this point, it's more of the, it looks like this class might be a little crowded, can we open up a new section? You know, that type of minor changes. The students will get their schedules tomorrow. And at that point, any parent or student of an 8th grade or 9th grade child that would like to see a change to their schedule prior to the first day, we have guidance prepared to do that as well. So those changes can be made either in person or over the phone before the first day so that the students coming in from, for 8th and 9th grade should be ready to go.
Just remind us what time Pirate Voyage is, please?
5:30 PM and I want to stress that for students, we have a cookout planned, so please, if you're watching at home, we will be grilling, Mrs. Spitz will be grilling hot dogs and hamburgers and I'll be assisting. And so, you know, we're looking forward to the cookout. Really though, it's driven by our student leaders, our student council. The students in our student council prepare a video, they do icebreakers and team building activities with our newest, you know, our newest Pirates. They show them the building, you know, so it's really a positive night, so we hope there's a great turnout and there has been historically a very good turnout, so we're excited about that.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, all new hires to the district, once they've been screened and, and offered employment by the principals in any building, then, then come through my office. And the quality of the hires that OHS has been able to make this summer is, is very, very exciting. They've, they've brought on a very strong teacher for the computer science AP courses. I met a terrific PE teacher just the other day. They've added a, an outstanding guidance counselor, math teachers. I've just been uniformly impressed with every hire that they've sent my way, so I'm very excited for them for this year. I think it's going to be a terrific year for OHS. Thank you.
Mr. Coonan? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, kind of on the same topic dealing with the high school, I guess also too is one of my requests, and I'll handle it now while you, the gentleman here, is every position right now in district filled? Do we have any open positions going into the start of school?
A very, very small number. We have one here that, that Mr. Conery just mentioned. The elementaries are fully staffed correctly, correct? The middle school, we just hired a, again, a very, very strong STEM teacher just the other day, and I believe at this point, they are fully staffed. I believe that we're, we're staffed throughout the district. We are trying to fine tune some of the instructional aid positions. Director Henderson's been working on that with the central admin staff, but we're in very good shape.
And I will just say, I expect to have the vacant position filled before the start of the school year. We've had some tremendous applicants, so.
And that was 8th grade science, right?
Um, no, Dr. Garso just mentioned that we have one position currently open at the high school and we're well into our interviews and we're at a position where I'll be recommending someone for Dr. Garso to meet with, and so I expect that that will be filled prior to the start of the school year.
Wonderful, thank you. If I could just, the 8th grade science position was filled by someone who had been in the district working for us as an IA, and it turns out she's a crackerjack science teacher as well. So that was, that was a terrific hire, we're very excited about her.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, you're done hijacking the handbook discussion?
Well done.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Oxford High School handbook for the 2016-2017 school year.
So moved.
Second? I'll take the, any further discussion?
No, just that, there'll just be that little change about the after the 10th thing.
Correct. And we'll, and we'll read any additional tardies.
Yeah, that, that would, I think it would just clear it up. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take the roll call vote. Mrs. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mr. Coonan?
Yes.
My yes as well, with the record show. Motion carries with four in the affirmative and one absent. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next on our item is, next item on our agenda is handbook revisions for Chafee and Barton. I'd like to invite up principals Wiley and Palczarski.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. That's a little different. You guys approved it, so to speak, in June, I think? Is that accurate?
I think we held it because we wanted to give you an opportunity to review the changes that were recommended by Mrs. Parmley and Sharp.
And the, the changes are accurate. We didn't see any issues. We went through them. There was a couple of quick questions that we just, page 13, food service, a little bit vague, and we just wanted to clarify. Is the, if you read it, it's just, it, it sounds like it was written to you folks about what they, what the former principals would like to see? And it sounds like there's probably a policy or the wellness policy already encapsulates that. And if it does?
It does.
There's no sense in revisiting it, so.
The only other one was on page five. I don't know, we just need to make a decision on, as far as report cards, the K to 2 report card is somewhat different than the 3 and 4 at Barton, and our second graders will be coming up to us, so.
And actually, the, the change is even more specific when you think about, I remember last meeting, you talked about, at the high school, it goes 1, 2, 3, 4 versus 4, 3, 2, 1. If that's something we should rectify now, pre-K through 12, it might be beneficial. I don't know if it's something we can do, but Robin and I, I mean Martha and I, we're both willing to revisit it if.
I know that the elementary, I believe it was all of the elementary report cards for, I'm trying to remember now if we did Barton as well. I know at Chafee, we, we re, they were redone by the former, what was she, curriculum director? So that the, the report cards were more indicative of the standards for each grade level and that, so they had specific report cards for each grade level. I don't have the Barton ones in front of me. Are they, are they in that format or are they in a different? Do you have a separate report card for grades?
3 and 4, right.
They each have their own?
That's proficient.
Yeah, they're, they're sort of the same, right. It's just grade 2 that was spin down at Chafee now.
Which was under the 4, 3, 2, 1 acts.
That's the one that would have to be.
If I could, my recommendation would be that we don't make any changes with the report cards for now because as the chair has indicated, when the previous curriculum director was, was on board and just as I was coming on and probably as Mr. Pitar was, the change was made. And I, I would hate to see us rush into any changes with the report card that had in place for a couple of years without forming some kind of study group to look at this more carefully, make sure we do it right. The grade 2 being at Barton, I don't think presents an issue. I think that they should remain on the same schedule, the same format that they had been done, had been used at Chafee. But again, I would recommend forming a, a study group to look at the grading policy and the report card format. And we could probably make a change either at the mid-year or at the end of this year for next. I just wouldn't want to see any, any kind of rushed judgment on this.
One other piece was page 21, the bottom, if you see the last notice. It talks about basically a hearing officer, if you will, of a grievance officer, and then it's listed, high school, coffee, middle school, TBD, TBD, and then it gives names of specific people. And it might just be easier to say the principal or, principal or his or her designate to save trouble in case that changes. It just, it sounds like.
I don't have the full handbook in front of me. Do you? Can I? I'm wondering if that's a cut and paste from a policy?
Sounds like a good.
We did, we did have that happen before, yeah, see, this is getting cut and pasted right out of the sexual harassment policy for the district. So, and that, I'd be hesitant to change that without the policy subcommittee taking a look at it, because there's a lot of very specific required language under title, what is it, Title VII or something. It may just require updating the contact info. Some of these folks are probably not with us any longer.
Correct.
Yeah, that's the section, that, just the person.
I do believe that the statute requires an, an actual name of a person.
Then principal's names, probably, for mine, it's not someone who.
But yeah, we should absolutely update that section with the, with the proper names of the principals. Yes.
That is something that we are going to cover. We wanted to bring Kathy Martinello into our meeting, but didn't want to do it until the school year started because she's, she was at her busiest time and we didn't want to, you know, have her involved with that yet. But that is something we are definitely going to address because we'd like to make sure that we are up to all the state's standards with that. So it is going to be covered shortly.
And we've been jumping around a little bit, but it, the second part is about page four and it's just an assumption, I, I assume it's something you guys are, before it goes to print, it'll say either the June 2015 or the 13 revision, whichever one was approved, probably, unless it's June 2016 or we do current, August 2016.
I think it should be current.
August 2016.
If you're going to add a revision date, it should probably be current.
So that's, if, if it's one on the front cover, it's probably got to be the same on the inside cover.
Yeah. So are you happy with the rest of the modifications as?
Yeah.
Okay, so just to overview before we take the vote, so in the inside cover, we'll be looking to update name and contact information for the special education director, the principals of Chafee and Barton. We'll also update the handbook to indicate the new grade configurations that are going into effect this year. Page four and the cover will have a revised or have a, an updated revision date. You're satisfied with the makeup assignments, Paul, makeup assignments, they're just modifying, suggesting modifying a sentence to say if returning from trip or vacation during days school is in session.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Could you just, I hate to pull something out of context, just can we see the whole paragraph and just how it lays out within it, please?
I'm assuming that it's the one here that's highlighted, but it says, number three, teachers will not be expected to prepare and/or assign any classwork for students to take on a trip or vacation if, is that where it's going? If returning from trip or vacation schedule, no, that doesn't make sense. Do you know what the intent was there, Dr. Garcia?
I think it's.
It's been a couple of months.
I believe that the intent was to add this language at the, at the front end of that sentence so that I would read that if returning from a trip or vacation scheduled during school days, I'm sorry, during days on which school is in session, teachers will not be expected to prepare and/or assign any classwork for students to take on said trip. That doesn't make sense either. I would move that we strike this change.
That works for me.
The language has worked thus far, I don't, I'm not understanding the intent.
Concur. We can always revisit this after.
That's right.
So let's see, they're looking to add some information in here about chronic tardiness. So presently, tardy, chronic tardiness will result in parent notification, principal follow-up, and if necessary, a visit from the adjustment counselor and/or principal. That is the present language. The requested change, chronic tardiness will result in parent notification, principal follow-up, and if necessary, a visit from the support staff and/or administration. Habitual cases may be referred to a truant officer and/or DCF. Any questions regarding that? I think that's in line with the recommendations.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, moving to page 13, academic support. Move evening, reword as follows. Okay, so the, the present paragraph is titled Evening Academic Support. The sentence following is, the Oxford School Department offers several evening programs that provide mediation and enrichment. Notices will be sent home with your child or broadcast on the educational access channel and then parentheses, channel 13, period. The recommendation is to remove the word evening from the heading, so it will simply say academic support, and to reword that sentence as follows. Instructional staff at Clara Barton and AM Chafee will provide remediation and/or enrichment after school every other week. And that is to be in line with?
The collective bargaining.
Right, correct.
Right. Any questions or comments about that? Next we have food services, and I think you actually already alluded to this.
My recommendation would be to just strike it, not make any amendments. It's, it's out, I believe it's carried in the both wellness policy.
It's just not stated directly.
And I think it's in your policies.
And I see in the, in the note here in Mrs. Parmley's copy, perhaps we recommend adding a sentence under food service to please refer to the district's wellness policy.
Yeah, that just, if someone's looking for it, the wellness policy of the district would cover it.
Does that make sense to the committee, adding that line? Please refer to the district wellness policy?
Yeah.
However, is the statement you spelled about?
However, is your statement spelled out that you can't bring your stuff in, the candy and all that?
It's not presently spelled out.
I'd like to see that really spelled out in there because people don't take the extra step.
So that's, that's where, if, if in fact, that was, my impression was that that's what the two former principals needed, wanted it to say. It just, the way they described it was as if, it could be in one or the other, but it's already in the other. If you want it in the handbook, simply just, we could spell it out exactly as it's written here. We would like to see, um, that parents are unable to bring in candy food items, if that's-
So how about underneath food service heading, we insert the district wellness policy in its entirety?
That's a pretty big policy.
It's a lengthy one.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see personally, just an excerpt.
Just an excerpt.
Yes, the wellness policy, but including these, the main excerpt, I think we should see the intent, that the former principals, and it sounds like yourself, is, if you put a black one in there, the parent sign off in it, look, you can't bring cupcakes in it. Here it is right here. It's not on, not on the website, go to page 82 and you can find it there. Just really make it black and white.
So we'll add under food service, um, from the district wellness policy, and then we will list that excerpt pertaining to the prohibition of bringing food from home. I don't have that exact language in front of me, but it's from our standing policy. We're happy with that.
It is in the back, but it's not the full, I don't think it's the full wellness policy of the district. It's only on, in the back of this book.
Page 43.
Yeah, page 43. It's your wellness policy. It's an excerpt of it, a local wellness policy. It's only a appendix of it, appendix J. It's really brief. But it has no, it does not talk about birthdays or Halloween or so. I think your policy in general and wellness does.
It does.
It's probably pages, so.
So we'll add that excerpt under food service. Everyone's satisfied with that?
Yep.
Page 16.
Yep, this is an excerpt.
That was defined, at least.
Page 16, under the current heading is cell phones and electronic devices. The recommendation is to add toys to that heading, so it will then read cell phones, electronic devices, and toys. And to add in a sentence to that heading that indicates, please do not allow students to bring toys from home to school as they are a distraction, can get lost, stolen, or broken, which causes unnecessary upset for our students. Any questions or comments about the addition of that statement? Okay, next we have kindergarten.
This one, I, I'm assuming under number four, they just want to delete all wording prior to, after school year. So once you get to the word April 1st of the prior school year, period. Want me to read it in its context?
No, I don't. But again, this is a, a cut and paste out of the policy, and I understand why they're asking to have it deleted because it's really out of context. But I think that where it's, it specifically states approved by the Oxford School Committee and the date, it would probably be best to look at having that policy revised by the policy subcommittee, and then it can be inserted into the handbook in the future. I, I get, I get very leery about making changes within the handbook when they're simply inserting our policies in there, just so that there's consistency. So, um-
So the basic rationale was since the 2013, 14 school years passed, but just keep it in there and-
Understood, and it makes absolute sense to, to delete it, but I think that it should be consistent with the policy since it is a cut and paste of policy. So I'd like to strike that for now.
And the same would go for 21, just leave this, leave it as is, except change the names, put the actual people-
Yeah, I think 21, we can absolutely, and the district sexual harassment policy probably, I would think is, that has to be distributed to employees annually. I would imagine that that probably has been updated. So yes, that, I will ask that the sexual harassment policy section of the handbook does have the proper contacts listed on page 21. And that is, is that a principal and a guidance counselor?
It is at Barton, but for you, it's just-
It's a guidance counselor at mine, so, you know. And my, my, if it is, if it does need a name during the school year, if a name of a person changes as it has in the past, I was just curious as to how that-
It's, it's more a position than it is a name. And the, the, the reason it's specifically generic is because the positions are slightly different in the, in the buildings, the support staff that they have in place. So I, my recommendation would be that we just, we just include the, the position title rather than the name of the-
I, I'm, I think that in order to comply with the sexual harassment, I think you have to have a name of a person. Where there is our names in there for now, if you could just add names for now and then kick it back to the policy subcommittee, where Kathy Martinello, our, our personnel director can review. I'd hate to do anything that takes us out of compliance with that, so. But I, I do agree the names should be updated. So we can update those contact names. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Okay, so we have several changes that we spoke about. We did strike a change to the makeup assignments, and we also struck, recommended change to the kindergarten, uh, policy. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all other, um, changes to the elementary school handbook as discussed this evening.
So moved.
In a second.
Discussion? No? Okay, I'll, I'll call for the vote. Mrs. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mr. Koonin?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Let the record show, passes, form the affirmative, one absent. Thank you both for coming.
Mr. Batar, do you mind if we get an update on the second grade move is going?
Certainly.
The update? Yes.
So, no, not at all.
Things are looking really good. We have all furniture moved in, all second grade teachers have actually come in and set up their classrooms. Very exciting to see. All materials are in and stored away in a nice organized way. We spent a great deal of the summer really making room for them and cleaning out and weeding out, and just reorganizing the building so that teachers could really access the materials as easily as possible. So we are good to go.
Do you want to plug your upcoming event?
Sure. Okay, so on, on the 31st, I will be meeting and greeting all second and third grade families new at different times, from one to two for second grade, and from 2:30 to 3:30 on that same day. And then I'll be meeting with fourth grade from four to five. So giving us a little bit more face time and some time to walk new, uh, parents and children around the building. Our second and third graders have not been up to the building yet, so really important for them to see where things are at before the first day.
And you have an event as well?
We have an ice cream social on 29th at 6:30. My PTO is sponsoring that, and it'll be a good opportunity to meet and greet and get the kids, I'll, I'll be taking kids around with, in the building, let them get a feel for it, especially the newbies. I, I think Dr. Garso has been in again today or yesterday, and he's just seeking a test on both buildings, I feel, are, are ready to go, so excited.
They look terrific. The custodians have done a yeoman's job this summer. They absolutely have, with the moves and the preparations and the, the stripping and waxing of the floors, and I think we're going to be in great shape next week.
They look great.
And I don't know the policy off the top of my head, but since we just talked about wellness, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the ice cream is okay because school is not in session, right?
Outside.
And it's outside.
It's not in school time.
That's right.
It's not in school time.
Competitive foods, I think it's something in competitive food is the language.
Just want to make sure that everybody's aware that that's why it's allowed for that particular event.
So gluten-free and-
No calories.
Well, thank you for your free-
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Moving on to new business on our agenda. So, the first item that I'd like to address was an open meeting law complaint that was filed against the school committee by the Oxford Town Clerk, Lori Kelly. That complaint was emailed to the entire committee and, um, and that, that was on Monday that that was put in place. So, um, I'll just briefly read the description of the alleged violation. A meeting notice and agenda for the school committee was emailed to the town clerk's office after the close of business on Thursday, August 18th, 2016, for a meeting on Monday, August 22nd, which was physically received in the clerk's office on the morning of August 19th. The executive assistant was advised with copy sent to the superintendent and school committee chairman, and not for the first time, that the town clerk's office must receive the meeting notice at least 48 hours before the meeting, excluding weekends and holidays, and they should consider rescheduling the meeting to Tuesday or later. The following response was sent by the superintendent after speaking with Chairman Batar. The school committee meeting will take place Monday night as scheduled. The committee has important and time-sensitive work to be accomplished in both open and executive session. It appears that this is an intentional disregard of the requirements of the open meeting law based on the agenda. It does not appear that any of the items would qualify for an emergency meeting. Therefore, the meeting could be rescheduled until Tuesday, August 23rd or later in order to not violate the requirements of the open meeting law. So as I stated, this was received by me via email around 1:00 PM on Monday, the date that we were scheduled to meet. And so my comments about this was I think this was a complete and utter misunderstanding. The, the clerk did send an email on Friday morning. I think that some of us were under the assumption that the assistant clerk had stayed after the five minutes and, and posted the meeting, and that the clerk wasn't aware of that. The language that she used was advising, it didn't, to be quite honest with you, wasn't definitive, in my opinion, that the meeting needed to be rescheduled. So we thought that we were okay to continue to have the meeting on Monday. Certainly was not any intent to willfully defy any law. I have to say, I'm disappointed that the clerk didn't pick up the phone and just call me and say, hey, if, you know, you really are not in compliance, you need to reschedule or I'll be forced to file this complaint. But that being said, that didn't happen, and now we have to deal with it. So I've passed around a draft, I don't know if it made its way down to the end of the table. We're required to, according to the, uh, the law that's cut and pasted in this complaint, that the public body shall, within 14 business days of receipt of a complaint, send a copy of the complaint to the attorney general and notify the attorney general of any remedial action taken. Any remedial action taken by the public body in response to a complaint under this subsection shall not be admissible as evidence against the public body that a violation occurred in any later administrative or judicial proceeding relating to such alleged violation. So what I have provided to the committee is my recommended response. It's addressed to the office of the attorney general, to whom it may concern. The Oxford School Committee was advised of an open meeting law complaint on 8/22/2016. To remedy the complaint, the committee chair rescheduled the meeting in question. We believe that by rescheduling this meeting, no violation occurred, and thus the complaint is fully resolved. I have a, and I would copy this to the town clerk in response to her complaint. Mr. Spitz?
Just a question, I mean, we've, my previous history, I, we never had a problem with postings. I don't understand why there's been issues. This, what, what's, what's happening with that?
Well, you know, if, if I may, I think that the, I went down to the clerk's office personally quite some time ago, I don't recall when. I want to say it was probably in the vicinity of six to 12 months ago. And I was there for other business, and she mentioned to me that she was concerned about how late some of our postings were getting in. And I responded to her that that was the first that I had heard, that this was an issue. And as chair of the committee, I would expect to be notified of each and every occurrence along with Dr. Garso, so that we can work to remedy the situation. I have not an email from her since that conversation. So I'm, I'm not really sure. I can tell you that moving forward, we will finalize the agenda on Wednesdays, assuming that we're meeting on Monday and there's no holiday and all that. So I will take responsibility of ensuring that the agenda is set by Wednesdays and get it, you know, and ensure that it's sent down to central office for posting.
Thank you.
You know, we, at the end of the day, we're all on the same team here, you know, I don't, I, I'm a little irritated that I feel like a punitive measure was taken, but that being said, we're all people, nobody's perfect. If we need to do better, then we should do better. And this will be an area that we certainly will make sure is not repeated again. So, thank you. Mr. Koonin?
Mr. Batar, I totally have to agree with you. In my two previous terms as chair, I'd never, I'd never heard a thing. You know, I was kind of dumbfounded, and I understand the town clerk has rules and procedures. This is when it closes, there's no extra five minutes. I wholeheartedly agree. The letter, it's very nice, but in my opinion, we were informed and we made, we made right away chances of stopping, stop the problem. There's mitigation was, yeah, we're going to Wednesday. We tried, we got clarification, there's, there's no complaint. There's immediately, it never happened, which like you're saying, constant communication would say, look, you didn't get it in, you got to reschedule. I guess not a one warning. You know, and that, that's, that's the town clerk's job.
Right. A simple phone call could have avoided all of this messiness. I have been advised though, that since the complaint has been filed, we are required to file a response.
And I think in the letter is, yeah, there's peer mitigation, that's, you know, that there's really, at this stage, no finding should be hovering against us because we follow the steps of the town clerk and procedures. We pulled it, you pulled the meeting.
Correct. Yeah. Did you have any thing to add?
I don't think, though.
Um, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve sending this letter to the attorney general.
So moved.
In a second.
Any further discussion or recommendations for edits? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Mrs. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mr. Koonin?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Let the record show, passes, form the affirmative, one absent. On that note of the one absent, I just want to state it on record, Mrs. Griffin was incredibly troubled that she was not able to be here this evening. She takes her commitment to the committee very, very seriously. She had planned a family vacation around school committee meetings and was planning on being here on Monday night and, and taking some time off after that. So she was very, very upset that she couldn't be here this evening and wanted me to relay that information to the community. She, I think we can all agree that she takes her role as a school committee member very seriously, and want to ensure that the public is aware of the reason for her absence this evening. Moving right along, I'd like to invite Mrs. Folio up to the table. She is going to discuss with us the capital improvement program. Good evening, Donna.
As, I'm not sure if all of you are aware, but the charter tells us that September 1st is the due date for capital to be submitted. So this is your meeting before September 1st. I did work with Justin to try to get information from the different principals as to what might be needed. So I just want to kind of review what I had. I think the numbers are really soft. Obviously, they're soft until you go out to bid on some of this stuff. But I wanted to know, we should be looking at five years out for capital if we want to look at some of this capital and say, well, let's do one this year and put something on for next year, or if you want to submit all of these or none of these, that's- That's what I'm kind of looking for. So, for technology, we had a request for 500 Chromebooks for the middle school that will roll out the next school for the digital initiative that was started this year. There's fifty workstations up at the high school requested, networking equipment, and additional security cameras. That's to, at all the schools, that's in addition to what was currently installed this summer. It was designed so that you could add additional cameras to get some areas that we weren't covering, like interior, or we did the basics, with the option to be able to add cameras on. Then athletics, I know we, I've heard on a number of occasions, resurfacing the high school track. I really have no idea, the seventy-five thousand comes from a conversation I had with the previous business manager a few years ago, and I've heard everything as much as up to a million dollars. So, I really don't know how much the track would cost. That's going to have, take a little bit more work to nail down a number. The same thing with the fields. There was a request for just like one or two of the fields, but I'm aware of all the fields needing some work done. Unfortunately, the DPW director's on vacation, so I want to go over with him a plan of what he thinks it would cost. I think there needs to be what they refer to as a deep aeration, and maybe some leveling out of the fields, reseeding and that kind of stuff. The high school bleachers, those are for inside. The report I have is that a lot of the bleachers at the high school inside the gym are in disrepair, and this is a request to replace them. There's also a request for the overhang repairs at the high school. And then, as I'm trying to get the fleet of transportation that we have replaced, because they're pretty outdated, we put in a request for a minibus. And the only thing I don't have that's technically on here, doesn't really need to be, is a replacement of an oven. It's about twenty thousand, which actually falls below the threshold for capital, but I think it can be paid for from food service. But, I just wanted you to be aware that that is a capital item that we are looking at doing. It just doesn't fall into the town's thresholds, which I believe is twenty-five thousand. So, what's your pleasure on what I should ask for, ask for at all, and hope I get something?
I'd like to open it up for discussion, any committee members. I'll, I'll, I'll start then here, seeing nobody's raising their hand. It's my understanding that the roof in this building continues to have issues. Is that something that should be considered, repairing the roof?
I think the roof is marked on with facilities, and there's actually a lawsuit going on about the roof. So, they're fully aware of the roof, so that, that will probably be a request from facilities.
Okay. I guess I'd also be interested in hearing from Dr. Garceau. Your, I mean, are these all requests that you endorse, or?
They are. My biggest concern is the one around the track, and I would want, frankly, more information from our athletic director or other experts about what is involved in that repair. And we, and as Donna mentioned, the numbers are very soft, and when we're talking about repairs or resurfacing, that ranges anywhere from seventy-five thousand to a million dollars. We absolutely need firmer numbers. Could I, Donna, if these are submitted September 1st, do we then have the opportunity to make any adjustments or revisions after September 1st?
I've always taken revisions, so I would say, yes, I could do revisions, you know, wearing my hat on that side. It's just to get the basic list going, and then I put it all together, and then it's going to go to FinCom. It doesn't actually get addressed until May, so there is time changes where I feel like adjustments have to be made for cost changes. So, I've always allowed that to take place, as long as it's on the list somewhere.
So, we could conceivably submit this and then continue to do our homework, our diligence?
And you can actually submit the track for year two. As I said, this should be a five-year presentation, and those numbers can be really soft for years two, three, four, five, because the further out you go, the less likely you know an exact cost.
Thank you. Any ballpark on that work on the athletic fields that we should put in as a placeholder, or is it acceptable to submit it TBD?
I've had a couple come in as TBD, and then we just try to get the number in prior to going to FinCom.
I, I have a little bit of a reservation about the middle school Chromebooks, simply because we haven't even gone through the pilot here. But, if, do we need to lay out the years in this?
It would be helpful to me, because that's how it's supposed to be presented to the town as, as a five-year type plan, but this is all the, only the stuff that I heard about, so.
Would you be amenable to us, if it pleases the committee, reviewing, you know, approving the list this evening, but at our next meeting, putting time, putting the times on it?
Mm-hmm.
That would be early in September.
Yeah.
Does that, does that please the committee? Is everybody okay if we, I mean, I'm assuming that you all want to go ahead and approve this as is, nobody has any revisions, but, I mean, at this time, let's, let's discuss it. Mr. Coonan?
Thank you. I'd like to see us go to workshop on this, to bring the principals in, and to really see, okay, twenty-five thousand dollars, the overhang repairs. And I saw them out here last week, they're painting it. The thing, do we really get down to the scope of the problem, in that to hear from the principals, what are the priorities? Fifty thousand dollars for high school workstations. Okay, you pay a thousand dollars a station. Where are they going? Who's going to use them? What does it look like? Just a vision. So, we get a vision, then we start looking at priority. I know, I've been hearing on this track, since I've been on the committee, I don't know, four, four or five years, five years, I guess, right now, that next year, it's going to be no good. You know, it's, it's like, okay, how many next years are there? We'll really get an honest assessment of, we can do it in workshop. We can sit, you can ask tough questions, it's like, we're doing our budget. So, does it look like, and get a better idea of, like Donna said, the softer ballpark? Improve multilevel, get them on the list and get it going? Wholeheartedly, yes, because they have been identified, but now, let's get back to the reasons why.
Mr. Spitz?
I want to second that, because basically, we don't know a lot that's involved with this. I mean, this is actually the first time I'm, well, it was Friday when you sent it out. I saw, was the first time I saw this. I really doubt we could get the track done for seventy-five thousand dollars. Again, to Dr. Garceau's point, I'd like to see some real figures on that prior to, like, even entertaining it. I mean, we don't know if we can even get in the ballpark with that. So, there's a lot of stuff on here. I mean, you know, is the bleachers something we could do, you know, three years down the road? Is the, to your point, on the Chromebooks? I mean, we don't even know how successful this is going to be at the high school yet. So, there's a lot of ifs here. I have no problem with saying that I'd like to get on the ticket here and to know where we're going in five years, but, again, to, I, I think we have to have a discussion at a workshop and bring everybody in and just hear what they have to say about it and figure out what's the most important. So, I'm with you on that one.
You have anything, Dad?
No, I have the same, same feelings on it.
Okay.
Was there something that this, do you recall, those of you who've been on the committee for a while, that this was presented before in any fashion, or is this kind of a new thing I'm throwing out at you?
It's my understanding that, in the past, the budget was prepared, you know, simply the budget. And then, what seemed to happen, and I'll, I'll defer to the other members, but what seemed to happen was, in the eleventh hour, you know, it would say, "Well, we're going to reduce our operating budget by these, these line items, and we're going to put them on for capital. You know, we're going to roll it into a capital program." So, in terms of getting something done by September 1st, this is the first I'm hearing of it.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Because last year, kind of last minute, I, I took what I saw, because I was like, oh, this should not have been on your operating budget. This should be in capital, and I threw it into the capital, knowing that, that's where it belonged. But, prior to that, it had been very difficult to get any information about what your needs were for capital, and I just wasn't sure why that wasn't going before you, because that's pretty much that in the charter, September 1st, so.
It just wasn't something that was practiced. Normally, prior to September 1st, probably this meeting every year, they would come to us with a list of things that had to be done, and we either approve them and send them to the town, the finance committee, and it was never done this effectively.
I mean, my, my understanding is even before, I mean, before Donna got involved, before you and I were re-elected to the committee, Mr. Spitz, that, I mean, the, the whole practice of preparing the budget for the school department was radically different than what it is today.
Absolutely.
It seemed like, you know, rather than submitting a budget proactively, which is, as I understand, required by the town charter, you know, you weren't able to get that budget from the former administration, and, and nine out of ten times, I think it was, well, here's your number of what's left, and work with it. And obviously, we've gotten away from that practice, and we're doing a lot better of, you know, planning, and, I mean, our process in the past couple of years, I mean, I know right when I first got elected, Mr. Spitz and I were kind of an ad hoc finance subcommittee meeting with, you know, you and other folks from FinCom, so we'll, we'll add this in. I think we've established a finance committee, I believe. I hope I'm not speaking out of term, but, I believe Mrs. Day and I are the finance subcommittee for the school committee, right?
Yes.
So, you know, we can certainly add this to our calendar of work that will need to be done going forward. Does the committee wish to make a motion to approve the recommended capital requests?
So moved.
Second.
Take the vote. Mrs. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mr. Coonan?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and let the record show, passes, with form the affirmative and one absent.
Thank you.
And I also had submitted, just for your knowledge, after having discussed with Ron Smith during the best practice review, we kind of decided to put a threshold to say, you know, if there's a purchase order issued that's greater than a hundred thousand, then maybe it should just be brought to your attention as, as a school committee. So, currently, this fiscal year, these are a list of the ones that we have approved that are greater than a hundred thousand. Most of it is the out-of-district tuitions. One is through food service, and the other is for the electric. Those are annual, these are annual requisition, so it's for the entire fiscal year. I do expect that you'll have at least one more that I'm aware of, which will be for the bus company.
I know that summer's been pretty busy with closing up the fiscal year and opening up the new year. Can you give us any update as to where we stand with the, I believe there were some policy manuals that were being worked on to address the concerns of that?
I'm working on those. It's, it's very involved, and I'm meeting, actually, the first week of September with Ron Smith to do the best practice results from the town side, because I want to also incorporate that in. So, the, what I'll say is, the non-HR payroll items, I think, are pretty set in stone, and I've documented and putting that together in a form of like a manual. I'm still working on issues on the payroll and HR to make it flow smoother and more efficient. But, what I can tell you is, a year has made a huge difference. Last year, at this time, you were facing a huge deficit. Went through a year that the principals had been empowered to control their budgets. They did an amazing job, better than I could have hoped for. We were able to accomplish a lot of things coming out of the end of the year, things that they had on their radar, I need to fix, I need to do. They were able to do those things, and they felt really proud of their accomplishments. So, I think, overall, it really worked well. We have, financially, you're in a much better position going into the year. It's been, to me, just like a night and day difference.
Can you speak to the committee about the status of the senior accountant position? I know I'm aware, but I don't know if everyone is aware of the status.
Okay, so, the town also has one, and they have not, we have not hired the senior accountant on the town side yet. I do have applicants, and we're interviewing. On the school side, it was also recommended that you have a senior accountant. We did put that ad out before the fiscal year ended, and you hired Justin Ledoux, who had been working with me on the town side for the last year in the accounting office, also as the assistant MIS director. To me, it's just a relief to have him, and I think everyone in Central Office can say that. He's got a great personality, he works well with people, he's very smart, knows, understands the, the intricacies of the software and is making it work for the school and adding fields that they, "Oh, I can track that," or "I can do that more manu," more efficiently, instead of everybody having a manual list they're keeping. Making the software, for the financial software, communicate with IPASS so that it doesn't have to be duplicate entry. There's just, he comes with so much knowledge, and we're very fortunate that he decided to step into this position. He's from Oxford and has worked for the town for quite a few years, very knowledgeable. Very excited to have him.
He's a graduate of Oxford High.
Graduate of Oxford, has a master's degree, very smart young man.
If I could, we've, we've also made arrangements for Justin to get the benefit of support from the Masters Association of School Business Managers. He's going to receive extensive training towards receiving a certification as a, as a school business administrator, so we're hoping that he's going to be with us for quite, quite a long time.
He's jumped in with both feet. He's been at the negotiation sessions with us, learning that. He's, I've thrown the budget at him in its entirety. He keeps up with the changes that are being made, getting to know where the people are and the locations there are, the account numbers. He's, he's very excited about it. It's a breath of fresh air to have somebody so excited and stepping in.
Well, I'm happy too, for, for you, to have some additional support on both the town side and the Central Office side, so. One person wearing many hats. Any questions or comments for Donna? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is policy updates, and I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Spitz.
Thank you very much. In your packets this week, you received the policies that the committee has gone through, and in the ones that were sent to you, the changes were online. You could see what we crossed out or changed wording on. Basically, everything you have with you, and I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading, so we don't have to go through each one of these. The one that we have on building and ground security, which is, says it's page 51, I don't know if that'll help you at all. I wanted to bring this to Mr. Coonan's attention, because this was one of the points that he had brought up during discussion of this, and I will just read this little paragraph and see if he finds it acceptable. It's under building and ground security. Just a minute, though. You got it?
Yeah.
Third paragraph down, it says, "Access to school buildings and grounds outside of regular school hours will be limited to personnel whose work requires it. Principals shall establish an adequate key control system that will limit access to buildings to authorized personnel and will safeguard against the chance of entrance to buildings by unauthorized persons." So, I think we covered you in that.
Appreciate it.
But, all the rest of them, basically, what I'd, I'd ask the committee to do, if you do have time to do this, it would be a big, big help before our second reading. If you could just go through these at your leisure, see if there was anything at all that you don't agree with. These were all policies that we made very few changes to. The computer policy is very extensive. Kadian did that for us, and the committee, he just did an absolutely fantastic job on. I couldn't have asked for more from him, and he's so busy doing everything, and he still was able to do this for us. So, I would just ask the committee, again, at your leisure, you can either shoot me an email or bring it up at the next meeting, because we're not meeting again until, I think- think my next meeting with them is September 5th. So if you could do it prior to that, I would really appreciate it, and we can address any concerns you may have on any of these policies that you've had in this package, because we're gonna have another whole package coming at you very shortly. So the whole intent of our policy committee this year is to get through that entire binder. Yeah, it is, and that's, we're more than halfway through it now. So we really are serious about getting this done this year so that everything says updated and approved in 2016, 17, so that the book is totally current and the committee agrees with the policies that we've established. So I just ask that you do that for me, and, you know, if you could get through, and I made a motion to waive the reading, so that is still on the table.
Before we get to that motion, if I may?
Yeah.
This may, may be to Dr. Garcia, I'm not sure, but the computer and internet acceptable use policy, do we know if, if this is intended to cover the district-owned Chromebooks that we're going to be issuing students with?
Yes, it is, okay.
So there's one?
There's not gonna be any changes due to that.
Okay.
And people do, within each school that gets the Chromebooks eventually, if we go through each building and get them, there's also a permission slip that the parents sign, and they're really held to the same accountability that they would be held to here as far as internet usage of those Chromebooks at home. When you read the policy, you're gonna find that Kadian did, he tried to hit on every single possible topic that we could have, we could uncover with that usage. So I think we've, we've done a pretty good job with it, and he did an excellent job with it, so it should be all set.
So with, with regards to your, your motion, I would, did you make the motion?
I made the motion that we waive the first reading.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that, and then I'd like to open it up for discussion and just say, I'd like to put the, post the proposed revisions to these policies on our website so that the public has access to them, and if anybody has any questions or concerns about the proposed revisions, they can contact one of us, or preferably Mr. Spitz directly, but any of us. So, you know, I think it's important that we get community input. I, I know you have a number of community members on your-
I do, there's four of them.
On your policy subcommittee, but it seems like whenever we, whenever we change a policy, we always get the phone calls after the fact.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'll, I'll share with my social networks that we're looking at this, but if we can get this posted on the website tomorrow, it's proposed, and then people, you said the policy subcommittee is meeting September 5th?
September 5th is our next meeting.
So that would be, that's my only comment. Any other discussion, Mr. Coonan?
This is really a great job. I mean, on these right here, going through, and I appreciate the hard work that the committee does, because they're not easy. And it's kind of like the waters that come up in policy, and I kind of look at those. The community resources, if you, if I don't mind, I'm just gonna steal it briefly, because I don't know if I'll be here for next meeting, I am getting into a coaching season. So page 104, which is the community resource person speaker. And being a teacher myself, I look at this, and I know I've had speakers in my classroom that about halfway through said, you know something, buddy, I think you really gotta leave. And, and, but how do you tell them that way? They're, someone recommending a speaker maybe from an administrator, oh, this person's great, and they walk and they start talking about topics that really shouldn't be in school. Or you find out later that, or, again, this is the waters. Are they required to be coreded? When they come in, and this is just, I don't know if it's policy, if it's into the policy or is it redundancy, or is there a form that the principal would fill out that goes along with that? So again, you're checking content, you're checking background, that the person's of character that would be approved, or is there a basic code check, okay, the person's not a sex offender, they can come in, how do you, and go around and censor a person? It's really just some of those discussions, so maybe we'll go back to Dr. Garcia and then to the principals, if they have their input on that, on how they're policing, who comes into their schools, and, you know, and working with their staff, so yes, they are supporting diversity, but then when again is, when it's a little too much on the other side, where it goes almost right-wing or ultra-conservative on those, if you guys are going through. So that's just a question that I have, and I'm sure you don't have the answer, but I'm just looking at the big picture, so through Dr. Garcia, if the principals can give you a little input on that, on how they like it see implemented into, into their buildings, or how they do it now. They might have a system now, and we learn a little more in the committee to make it all, make it work.
I can easily do that.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. All right, these are, these are wonderful and they're much, much, much overdue. Great, great job on it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to waive the first reading. I'll call for the vote, Mrs. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mr. Coonan?
Yes.
I'm a yes, let the record show that the first reading be waived, four in the affirmative, one absent. Okay, let's see. Okay, we're through new business, we'll move along to information and proposals from subcommittees and study groups. The school operational needs committee hasn't met, I'm not aware of when the next, I'm not aware that the next meeting has been scheduled, so I have no further updates. Mr. Spitz kindly gave us his policy subcommittee updates. Don't believe any other subcommittees have been active over the summer months, with the exception of the negotiations, but that's, updates will be provided in executive session from our superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman Batar. It's been a nice, long summer and the weather's been terrific, but it's been very, very busy in the district. As we've talked about, we've had the move of grade two over to Clara Barton. Again, we'd like to commend our custodial staff and Mr. Doobie and our teachers for their flexibility and professionalism around that move, it was, really went off with a lot of hitch. We also had the move from eighth grade, from the middle school over here to OHS, and again, Mr. Heatherman over here at the high school, and Mr. Doobie and the gentleman at OMS did a terrific job. So excitement continues to build about opening, and the students will be reporting on Tuesday the 6th. Next week, our new staff report for two days of orientation and mentoring in Mr. Connery's program, and Ms. Bellhumor will be working with them as well. And then all staff reports on Thursday and Friday of next week. They'll be spending time in their buildings, but we'll also have convocation here at the high school, as we have in the past couple of years, where we bring the entire staff together, and we have a very dynamic and very important guest speaker in Jessica Minahan, who's gonna join us Monday afternoon. Ms. Minahan is very well-versed and expert, in fact, in the areas of meeting the needs of our kids in terms of social, emotional learning, so we very much look forward to her joining us. Tomorrow, the secretaries, I should say, all the, all the bus routing has been done and that, all those, the stops figured out by DOM, but tomorrow we have all the secretaries come together and review all that, because frankly, nobody knows our neighborhoods and our streets and our families better than the secretaries, and they'll give it a once-over and make sure that everything's in place, but as soon as that's finalized, we will be posting links on, via all our social media outlets, so that parents can access that information. It will definitely be on the website, and we would anticipate that that will be in just the next couple of days. We have a number of exciting events over the next week, preparing our kids to enter, including the pirate voyage here at OHS, which is tomorrow, and the events at Barton and Chafee that you heard about earlier. And just, once again, the hires that we've, we've made this summer have just been of outstanding quality, and we're excited to see them hit the ground as well. One, one issue that does come up from time to time is the issue of Commander Maisely's position, NJLOT-C. That is a hiring process that's collaborative between the US Navy and the district, and that's in process, and we have a number of candidates, but Commander Maisely is, Maisely is going to be sticking around with us until that has been solidified, until we have a, you know, just a top-shelf candidate in there to hand off the baton to. So he's, he's a little bit like Sherri's on this endless farewell tour, but Maisely will be with us until we have somebody firmly in place, and the program is, again, gonna bring us great things this year. Football field is, is full of kids from the Oxford football program, and we expect Coach Carlson to be able to really flesh out our OHS football team as, as well this year, so we've got a lot to be excited about. It takes a few years to get things happening, but this is gonna be a very good year for us. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have anything else? Okay, this is from school committee members, Mrs. Day?
No, thank you.
Mr. Spitz?
I just wanted to do a couple quick notes. One is to thank Commander Maisely for the sailing trip that I was able to go on in Newport. I've been there a couple of times. It's a fantastic trip, it's great to see the kids in action. We had a great day, it was beautiful, you know, it was a nice way to spend my, my sick leave, is, is out on Newport and near Gansett Bay, so I did enjoy that very much and just wanted to thank the commander, and that's really pretty much what I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Mr. Coonan?
Just a basic welcome back, and Dr. Garcia alerted a lot of us earlier. Just, when I have this on my website, if the principals, yourself, Kadian, just give a walkthrough, make sure everything's current and up to date, that there is, others change every year, and you get a call and say, hey, this person isn't even here anymore, or maybe an old bus route, the link, just really, just double-check the links again, just to clean the buildings, clean the website, that everything's good for the first day in school. And again, congratulations, a very, very productive summer.
It's, the summer, it is an extended summer, but it seems to have gone by incredibly fast, for me anyways, so it's been busy, we've been, we have been meeting quite a bit. We did our first session with MASC for the district governance program, several negotiations, meetings, meeting with various bargaining units. Like to thank everybody for all their hard work over the summer months for the kids. You got, what is it, two weeks almost to get your summer reading done? If you haven't finished it up, finish it up. And looking forward to a great start of school, so that's all I have this evening. I'd like to, we would, we will be entering into executive session this evening. A request will be made to enter into executive session according to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Further requests will be made to enter into executive session according to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 2, for the purpose of conducting strategy, sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Reasons for executive session, as listed on the agenda this evening, are to discuss the possible settlement of a lawsuit, to discuss the threat of possible litigation by, by the attorney of a former employee, and to discuss status of negotiations with instructional and library aides, clerical workers, and cafeteria custodial units of the local 888 SEIU CTW. Like to entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved with a comment.
Take the second and then-
Second.
Discussion.
My comment is I just want to make it public notice that I will recuse myself from the last discussion for the instructional aides and library aides.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Like to call for the roll call vote, Mrs. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mr. Coonan?
Yes.
I'm a yes, the record show, four in the past motion, carries four in the affirmative, one absent. We are now in executive session, we will only return to, to open session for the purposes of adjournment. To ask that the room-